Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, Pumpkinhead, all the fucking items in general comment.
You have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
What about my general? You promised Bob. So let's see here. What do you got? Well, CD thirteen. We have Hugo Stalin Martinez on CD thirteen for Ling Ling. What is a Ling Ling and why is it on Hollywood Boulevard? Well, it sounds Asian. I don't know. How about you, City Attorney Buckethead? Do you know?
Pumpkinhead. He's Buckethead.
I'm sorry. Yes. Until I know what it is, I want to defer this fucking item. I don't want Ling Ling on this star. No, I want another star. I want a second Donald Trump star. Donald Trump two point O star. What do you think of that?
I like it.
Yes. Then we get to number six. The LAPD forty-five thousand dollars for some bitches? The Police Officers Symposium on Women? I didn't know they had women cops. Is that true, Marquisi? I didn't hear about that. No. Yes, has a woman ever been a police chief? No. Will a woman ever be police chief of LAPD? No. And McCosker will see to it, won't you? I want a woman police chief. So when you go to number six and you go to the symposium, you tell them on the record, Goat Puppet wants a woman to become the first chief of police. Let's give Goat Puppet a hand. Well done. Yes, preferably, I would like our new police chief to be black, lesbian, and have a God complex. And then we have number seven. The proprietary snitching DAX space. This is a plan by Paul Martin Krikorian. And the evil mind of Tracy Park, I hear. Yes, this is where they're going to be spying. That's why Tracy's walking away from her chair in shame. As number seven, we'll try to spy using LexisNexis. Shame on LexisNexis. A component of the Fourth Reich. Fuck LexisNexis. Fuck proprietary databases. Lower all taxes and lower all fees. That's what Goat Puppet states.
I agree.
Yes. Then we have number eight. A mixed-use project? Fuck all the mixed-use projects. It's in Monique Cow's district. Where is she? Moo.
She's probably eating all the free food.
Yes. I'll be back to talk about the free food.
Yes, my name is Sandra Saucedo. I am speaking on item number nine.
Okay, so you have one minute.
Thank you. Yes, I am basically here to advocate for all the community. I am a board member in the El Cerrano Community Land trust and I think Karen Bass should fully fund this ULA program because you know what? It's pandemonium out there and so we need these funds. Sometimes this is the only thing people are looking forward to before they go crazy. Okay, so we need to stop this systematic oppression because we are standing in the pandemonium, in the middle of the pandemonium. So we need access. All the community needs access to all these funds. Sometimes people self-evict because guess what? We don't have any faith. We're tired of corrupt politicians who only smile and congratulate each other but never act on it because the community is here to speak. Okay? Thanks so much. That's all I have.
Yeah, hi. DanielGust.substack.com. All items and I'll come back for general.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Great. Hi, item number six. I get that here on my on my agenda. Item number six is about a forty-five thousand dollar non-monetary donation for LAPD employees to attend the 2024 Los Angeles Women Police Officers and Associates Symposium. I object to this until we find out whether the organization making the donation has taken a position on a videotaped domestic violence incident involving a member of the Fire Department and her domestic partner, which Chief Crowley and Chief Moore knew about and for which they both had video copies of the video recording. How can you have a symposium, free or not, by the Los Angeles Women Police Officer and Associate LAWPOA when the chief of police, or the former chief of police, Michael Moore-
Mr. Gus, please move on to another item. You've exhausted your one minute.
Well, no, that included my introducing myself. And so you have to let me make my point in my own way unless you want a bar complaint, Mr. Groot.
So again, we've been timing this. You've used your one minute on that item. Please move on to another item. It does not include your introduction.
Okay, well then we're going to move on to number nine then. Homeless emergency count. And I've got a full minute on that. Well, as I reported on DanielGust.substack.com, you may be low on funds because Mayor Bass and with the city's council's blessing, you have been putting undocumented migrants from Haiti, Venezuela, and China in recreation centers and other city-owned facilities and telling city employees, according to city employees who spoke to me, telling them to tell the public that those are actually homeless people when in fact they're recent migrants, for which Mayor Bass and Mr. Krikorian appeared in federal court yesterday. And yes, I did reach out to see if they're aware of the city's ruse there. So that may be why the city of Los Angeles is so far down on its homeless budget because you're not using it for homeless people. I published it, DanielGust.substack.com. Look at Karen Bass's big lie. And then the follow-up, where immediately after I reported on this subject, you moved the migrants out. You said that you were doing a deep cleaning when I said after the deep cleaning, can the homeless people go back in?
Mr. Gus, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Okay, and then they actually disappeared. Now, that is corruption from top to bottom, LAPD, LAFD, the mayor's office, and maybe the federal courts will hold the city council-
Speaker, your time has expired. Next caller?
Six, eight, nine, and public comment.
So you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Six. Putting forward forty-five thousand dollars for officers. So how long will they be away from their duties since you're already shortening staffing? You keep putting money out there for overtime on weekends. When cameras are around, let's do a parking event. Okay, you got a lot of money going out in different directions, but you still haven't taken care of forty-one eighteen. Okay, so we already know that that's not going to fly because no matter if that report was good, you would have went ahead and brought it forward. And you don't need the crisis before an election, right? There's this whole thing about this money thing. You follow the money, you follow corruption. And it all leads to city council right there. Every time you guys want to put money out, you don't see where it's going. What are they going to do with it? Where are the officers going to be? Who's going to be working for them? Oh, well, we'll get some officers to come in for overtime. I don't mind it if the money's coming forward, but again, where are these officers going to be at that time?
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item six. Go ahead.
Okay, number eight. Let's go to number eight. We go back to the same thing. Follow the money. Who is going to be and why is it going to be looked at again? A revision for what? It makes somebody needed some money going in a different direction. Let's bring it back forward and make sure everything's covered and I'm covering the people that got me elected. Number nine. You have a, that should stand. There should be money there. Not sure where it's going to go at the end. You guys are going to do the same thing you did and start pointing directions and fingers. And, oh, we don't know and they just didn't have the money and they always work in the dark. Well, if you know this, how come you appoint them to, you know, work that money, work the system? Everyone there says when money goes out, you guys have a system, but no one's the caretaker. Who's watching this money? The only people that make the money on these situations are the people in between. The motel owners are making a killing right now on this. But show me the twenty-one thousand people. We went from thirty thousand people off the street to twenty-one thousand people. They're still out there. It's not what politicians say, it's how they say it or what they don't say. And then when you call them out, they don't answer. They don't respond to it. They don't fix it. You were appointed to fix problems, not create them.
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on item nine. Please move on to another item.
Public comment next. Public comment.
Okay, we're not currently doing general public comment and your time is about to expire. So, next caller?
All items, please.
Okay. Good morning. You have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Great, so we'll begin. I can sort of, I'm going to speak to item eight and nine simultaneously. So please, Groot, you've been very obnoxious about cutting people off. Like, just give me a second just so you understand where I'm coming from. So item nine. Relative to the homelessness emergency accounts, general purposes fund fourteen-day notice anticipated below twenty-five million dollar balance. We're looking at some interesting numbers here because Measure ULA has a hundred and fifty million dollar cap, as some people have pointed out. Also, a couple of years back, Los Angeles City sent the federal government a hundred and fifty million dollars, well, returned it, saying, "We can't use it. Two years isn't enough time." The city got a hundred and fifty million from Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, with two years to spend it tackling the crisis regarding the unhoused resident population. If you ask Ryan Ahary, NHTC Ramensfield rep, he said "Two years just isn't enough time to spend a hundred and fifty million dollars on housing for people who need it." But we can see with ULA and these funds and this emergency account how quickly we actually can spend that money. And so now regarding item eight, that's a mixed-use project. One of the things that people are saying about ULA, the critics of ULA are saying, "Now that this tax exists, sales of these mansions have dropped." Okay, great. Let's acquire those mansions to a public trust, convert them into luxury multifamily housing, mixed-use with corner stores and dry cleaners and things those areas need because they are far away if you're in the hills. And we put some really fancy mixed-use there. In the public trust, we sell it and then we use the profit to build dense, affordable housing in other neighborhoods. This isn't rocket science. They've done this in other areas, but they're not interested in using what we have in a good way that makes the best use of resources. They're interested in creating as many transactions as possible and lining as many people's pockets as possible. And then when things take a long time and money runs out, they throw their hands up and say, "Oh, look, see? It's too hard. There's too many hurdles. We don't have enough people. We don't have enough funding." Well, yeah, when salaries folks are making six figures on their pretty time-
Speaker, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Groot, I'm talking on eight and nine both.
Yes, you've used one minute for each of those items. So please move on to another item.
Well, Groot, you are such a shore. Fine, let me go to a different item. Why don't I go to seven? The CAO is going to execute a contract regarding tax discovery. They need to recuperate some property taxes-
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Morning, nerds and virgins. Brock Landers, Los Angeles private investigator.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All open items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. That's items five through nine. Please begin.
Thank you. Five. I understand your communist Chinese overlords are probably making you do this. But if you can give a Chinese penis a star on the Walk of Fame, don't you think you could slip one in for Damon Instincts from Smokin' Scan? They would even share one. Six. Paying to send the police to a women's symposium? I think this is a waste of money. I think the same tactics that they use to oppress men, they could use to oppress women. You can't always be talking about equality and then say that women need to be treated as special and oppressed differently. We know that the police can oppress men and women the same. Proof is in the Scientology protesters. The LAPD is continually responding to fake calls, handcuffing both male and female protesters when they know they're unarmed and haven't done anything wrong. Seven. You guys couldn't find a data analytics place in Los Angeles? You guys really had to go to Georgia to give them all this extra money? I don't know. Are you guys campaigning for Fannie Willis? Is that what you're trying to do? Number nine. On the homeless, maybe we can stop wasting money on nonprofits that say they want to end homelessness when ending homelessness would put them out of business. That would be like making me the poster boy for the Size Doesn't Matter campaign that Bob is announcing next week. Bob, she lied. It does matter. The CEO of Lhasa makes four hundred and thirty grand a year and the mayor's daughter works for her. Is that a coincidence? Stacy would do that job for Hasp as much, get ten times the results, and entertain her staff with a ditty about Paul trying to hook up in a park bathroom. Why don't you work with people that don't have a financial interest in keeping people homeless? KDL is the only one of you with the balls to call out the homeless industrial complex.
Next caller, which items would you like to speak on?
Hi. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to? And good morning.
Can you tell me what items are available for comment? Also, good morning and general public comment, please.
The items that are open for public comment are five through nine.
Five through nine. Gotcha. All right, thank you. Item number five, Walk of Fame. We should stop putting stars on the Walk of Fame. If none of those people are going to help take the people that live on the Walk of Fame off of the Walk of Fame, you put somebody named Lang Lang. I'm sure he could do a thing on the piano. But until he goes down to Hollywood Boulevard and does his thing with the piano and helps get people off the street, there's no point in putting a star on the Walk of Fame for him. Item six. LAPD, DEI, KKK, IDF, it's all the same. Let's keep it G. LAPD's full of shit. They constantly drag women out of city council chambers for speaking out against oppression. And I think there's a huge conflict of interest there considering the women there upholding the patriarchy and they're going to go ahead and attend some women's symposium acting like they're not stuffing chicks in the back of vans, keeping them quiet. Item number seven, a private firm. So we're giving money away to somebody's friends. I don't know who knows who that's in this company. But I'm sure if somebody did a quick search online, they'll find out that somebody knows somebody that's getting a check for this. So fuck it. And it's all to snitch on people for tax evasion, which honestly, we should all stop paying taxes. We should stop paying taxes. We should stop paying taxes. Item number eight, mixed-use for some culinary project. It's talk about potentially acquiring a property. I think it's interesting how when somebody's friend is getting a check or something to make somebody look good, it's real easy to figure out how much it costs to acquire a property. Item number nine, twenty-five million dollars left in the homeless fund? That's hilarious because I think we just last year doubled the LAPD budget despite all that budget advocacy bullshit. They got an extra billion dollars of overtime. So I don't know, maybe we could shave off something. Maybe we could return the cup holders or bring back the staplers or maybe finally do something with those chairs that are sitting in some room somewhere in one of the precincts. Sell them online, get some money back. You take something from LAPD and give it to the homeless fund because it's ridiculous that all of a sudden there's not enough money when we're just finding it in the walls to give to the cops to fly chili from place to place in helicopters. Do your research, learn how they waste our money, and stop letting them just throw it around like it's like they're at the strip club. This is ridiculous. Some of them go to the strip club with our money. Shout out John Lee. Damn, I still got time? All right, cool. I'm gonna go back to item number item number six, LAPD DEI. They use all this diversity, equity, inclusion shit to control us. They actually have no interest in liberating anybody. That's why they just put black capitalists, Spanish capitalists, Armenian capitalists in charge, and they don't do nothing about giving people the rights. They do nothing about giving people the means of production. They don't want us to own anything. They don't want us to own our homes. They want to give everything to the LAPD and give them honors every day. They want to, now, oh, look, we got women cops. Everything is cool. Oh, we got black cops. Everything's cool. Oh, we got Mexican cops. Everything's cool. Yeah, everything's cool. And yet people are getting evicted every day. People are getting killed every day. Nobody feels safe. So fuck off with that bullshit.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Hi, this is Andrew Riddick for item number five.
Okay, so you have one minute for item number five.
As of today, the Department of Cultural Affairs has not publicly provided a determination as to the Walk of Fame matters submitted to it pursuant to section twenty-two point one oh nine on March twelfth regarding any alteration to the Walk of Fame as a work of art owned by the city of Los Angeles and existing on the public right of way. And until they respond to that matter under the administrative code, this council should withhold any votes on Walk of Fame names as those votes could be in potential conflict of the commission's decision. Under section twenty-two point one one zero, the Cultural Affairs Commission has fifteen days to decide on this matter. And according to, so that's March twenty-seventh. And according to a recently retired staff member of the chief legislative analyst's office, who I'm sure you all know, my submission to the commission should be considered a submission under the broad language of section twenty-two point one oh nine. I've reached out to your offices for over a week and a half now to no response. And unless the commission has provided a public determination, I'm not sure why anyone would want to interfere with that process until they do. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. You have one minute.
My name is Jessica Brown. California resident for about fifteen years, LA resident for about nine years. In this time, I've been a SAG-AFTRA union member for about three years. And it has been a wild ride for SAG-AFTRA WGM members. And it's been interesting listening to these speakers today because I have a feeling unless we get more jobs back in LA, all of your numbers are going to be mute because a lot of us are facing homelessness. I've lost a friend because of the impacts of the strikes. Not being able to get jobs, not being able to get money to afford the cost of living that we had, that we were living before the strikes. And I just wish that you would consider extending unemployment benefits for entertainment gig workers because we are struggling. We are, we need assistance. We need your backs. And thank you for your time.
Good afternoon.
It was a beautiful day in nineteen sixty-eight at Cal State Long Beach when this black poet came and read his poetry to the students. Beautiful is black. Beautiful is black. Beautiful is black. Beautiful is black. 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 Black.
Good morning. My name is Johnny Matthews. And I'm here to ask the city of Los Angeles and also the county of Los Angeles, I'll be doing that, to bring some attention on the eviction process. It's very hard for tenants to to fight against landlords that have the capital to make things happen the way they want them to. Ending an eviction. I don't think individuals should be evicted if there are severe repairs that need to be done to the properties where they reside. Residents have the right to live in a clean, adequate housing. LA Housing Authority says they don't have enough manpower to do inspections. So I think we need to try to address that. Thank you so much.
Number one. Promoting discrimination under Mayor Bass's leadership is unacceptable because other people come, I don't get the help I need. The other people are the black Americans. I am black also. That is promoting discrimination right here at the city hall. Number two. Council member who is under investigation like Council member Lee should leave, should be placed under leave of absence. I don't know about Karen Price. Number three. I'm asking and begging the city council and the chief of the police to look into hiring outside agents, independent agents to investigate LAPD from A to Z. Number four. The city to be mindful of money that is being spent entertaining each other while so many Angelenos and Californians are on the streets. Number five. Council member Dawson and those who are out of reach to the citizens who are elected, you, I think you should resign.
Well said, or what? Very well. Yeah, so now, as you see, I have this exhibit, this plate in my hand. They're feeding everybody outside. I don't see Eunice's with a plate. I don't see anybody here with a plate. How about you, McCosker? Did you get your plate of free food? And the reason why is because I mentioned it. See, normally they'd be out there going yum, 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 yum. Because that's all they do here is eat for free. But today, the public are eating for free. Too bad Monique Cow didn't show up. Moo. She could have gotten five or six free plates of food. Sorry, Monique Cow. Show up next time to public council here. And of course, Kevin continues to fuck up. He's got too much litter. So again, the puppets will support you. What's her name? Uh, Eunice. Yes, will support Eunice's shadow candidate. And fuck the city council. Yes, thank you so much.
That concludes our in-person general public comment time. Now-
Hello, yes, I'm unmuted. Yes, public comment.
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Serrano, mayor of the sixth district. Thank you for asking for free removal equipment because we're out of it. And if you go to one of these large nonprofits that make all the money, boy, they make you wait to get that stuff. So thank you, Mayor Serrano. Mr. McCosker, the fifteen, thank you for reminding us to keep our flags on Friday. The Irish delegates were very happy to see all the flags. But I'll bet you as seventh biggest donors to the Los Angeles, investors in Los Angeles, I believe they're very disappointed in what they're seeing. So let's try to improve that for the next time they show up and happy Naruz for all those who know what I'm talking about. Thank you and thank you for the time.
Yeah, this is Shelley Babes. Smokin' Scan is the jam with Damon at the helm. Good morning, elite communist war pigs. You pieces of shit. In twenty twenty-four, we shouldn't have something called Skid Row. Can you believe that? I've been here fifty-two years in California. And that Skid Row started in the fifties. You fucking animals. Skid Row shouldn't exist. You motherfucking communists. Nobody believes you. The people will rise eventually together of all races, all religions. We will all figure it out and come together against the communist war pigs sucking on Xin Jing's dick.
Next caller?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have one minute.
All right, so I want to apologize to Japan and Iran. They call them Persians out here because they're so ashamed of what the US did to Iran. It used to be a democratic fucking place in the Middle East. I think some things happened that if you ask your history teachers, they'll be very bashful about. They ruined Japan in a matter of seconds with atomic bombs. No other country has bombed another country with nuclear weapons before. And then they parade them around like it's no big deal. Oh, we all good. LA had Japanese people in concentration camps. They gave them some form of reparations and called it a day. Don't think that can't happen to you. They'll just throw you in a fucking cage and then wait for you to rot. Fifty years will pass and they'll celebrate you like a hero and a martyr, like nothing even happened. And they're not communists. They're capitalist war pigs, first of all.
All right, so thank you for finally deciding to take my call. You completely ignored me during agenda comment. That said, you shouldn't even be doing these comments separately. You should be taking everyone and hearing from everyone at once. But you all just sit there and allow corrupt council president Paul Krikorian to change the rules without a vote. You know, this is the same council president who spent the last two weeks hiding from the public after he announced, after he endorsed Adrian Nazarian for city council using his council office press release. And then what does he do on his first day back? He invites Adrian Nazarian to city hall to have him, you know, to, you know, give him all kinds of attention. And where's the most, you all should be introducing a motion to remove him as council president because clearly he's abusing his power and he needs to go. Kevin DeLeone needs to go. You know, the cops are now, you know, assaulting and-
Caller, your time has expired.
President, I have a great announcement. So last week was three-one-one week. And I want to give a shout out to my team. They increased our three-one-one request by two hundred percent.
Wow.
We took the top spot. So I'm really proud of my team for throwing down, being out in the community. We did a lot of education around this and we're-